In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the municipal clerk on January 3rd, 2012, faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, The Mirror and The Monitor on January 4th, 2012, at 3:47 PM, and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on January 4th, 2012, at 4:00 PM. The fire exits are to your right and your left, which is my left and right respectively, or whatever. Please let me remind members of the public, as well as members of the governing body, to speak into your microphones, and if anyone needs, we do have assistive listening devices available. Okay. Judge Herman, could I impose on you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman O'Leary?
Here.
Councilwoman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
And Borough Administrator Kovac?
Here.
Okay. Tonight, as many of you know, we have what I consider, and I think the governing body considers, to be a very special occasion. We're not only going to swear in a new police officer, and I'm going to administer the oath of office in a minute, but we have a number of promotions that we're going to recognize from members of our outstanding police department. So Chief Wisco, where are you?
Over here, sir.
Oh, how did you sneak in over there? Okay. Chief, would you like to lead us through this portion of the meeting?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here.
Chief, could you grab the microphone, please, just so everybody can hear you, and to benefit the members of our viewing audience at home?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you all for being here tonight. This is one of the more pleasurable details I get as chief of police. Tonight, as the mayor said, I'll be introducing our newest officer, and we also have five promotions. In a police department our size, five promotions is certainly very significant, so I'm very happy to be a part of this. Without further ado, I'd like to call up our newest officer, Kevin Schiffner Jr. Kevin, are you here? I'd also like to call up Mayor Minkoff to administer the oath of office, and Councilwoman Elsie Foster Dublin, our Chair of Public Safety, to read the resolution. However, before they do that, I'll tell you a little something about Officer Schiffner. Officer Schiffner was officially hired as a Highland Park Police Officer on August 6th, 2012. He was born in Brunswick, grew up in Metatchen in North Brunswick, and he's a 2004 graduate of North Brunswick High School. After high school, Kevin continued his studies at Rutgers University and Middlesex County College. In 2008, he enrolled at King University, where he graduated summa cum laude in 2010 with a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice. Also in 2010, Kevin was accepted into the alternate route program at the Kate May Kennedy Police Academy, where he successfully completed his training in June of 2010. Before being hired by Highland Park, Kevin worked for his father's company, KJ Construction in Somerset, New Jersey. Kevin recently married his high school sweetheart Stacy, and he reside in Monroe Township. I believe he'd been married three or four months. He is a newlywed also. Kevin's parents, Debert and Kevin Schiffner Sr., along with many friends and family are in attendance today to support him as he takes his oath of office. Holding the Bible for his swearing-in will be Kevin's wife Stacy. Stacy, would you like to step up here, please? Do you have the Bible? Or you have it?
Okay, so, please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Kevin Schiffner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Impartially and
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office
Perform all the duties of the office
Of police officer
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I have a resolution for you. And it says, "Appointment, hiring of Kevin Schiffner as police officer, Highland Park Police Department, Resolution Number 8-12224. Whereas the police, the position of police officer has become available due to retirements and promotion, and whereas Kevin Schiffner has applied for, has applied and is qualified to fill the position, and whereas the Public Safety Board recommends that Kevin Schiffner be hired as a police officer in Highland Park Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Highland Park that Kevin Schiffner be hired for the position of police officer, Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey Police Department, August 6th, 2012, at a salary base of $42,648. Adopted August 14th, 2012 Deputy Clerk Erin Martin. I, Erin Martin, Deputy Clerk Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey, do hereby certify the above is true and resolved to adopt by the Borough Council on the said day, said
Okay, thank you very much, and welcome aboard. Sergeant Thomas Hamel, will you step up, please? Tonight Sergeant Hamel is being promoted to the rank of Lieutenant.[552.37][552.37](Applause) Thomas Hamel was appointed as a Highland Park Police Officer on January 19th, 1998. He graduated from the New Jersey State Police Academy on May 22nd, 1998. He has also earned an Associate's in Arts degree from Middlesex County College. He was assigned to the Patrol Division on May 23rd, 1998. During his time as a patrol officer, he was assigned to the Detective Bureau for a seven month period, and he also served as the police department's liaison to the Borough's Office of Emergency Management. On June 6th, 2007, Tom Hamel was promoted to the rank of Sergeant and assigned to supervise the patrol squad. He has also assisted with the department's computers, police radios, and the equipment setup for all new police vehicles. He has over 30 letters of commendation in his file, and he has received four departmental citations. Sergeant Hamel is also a certified motorcycle officer, Internal Affairs Investigator, National Night Organizer, a member of the Bicycle Safety Committee. And holding the Bible for the swearing-in will be Tom's wife Ellen, along with his daughter Caitlin and son Justin. Will I step up, please?
I, Thomas Hamel.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Perform all the duties of the office of Lieutenant
Perform all the duties of the office of Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States
In the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. I have a resolution for you. Personal appointment, promotion of Thomas Hamel to Lieutenant, Highland Park Police Department, Resolution Number 8-12225. Whereas the position of Lieutenant has become available due to restructuring and promotion, and whereas Sergeant Thomas Hamel has applied for the position and is qualified to fill position, the position, and whereas the Public Safety Board recommends that Sergeant Thomas Hamel be promoted to Lieutenant, Highland Park Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of Borough of Highland Park that Thomas Hamel be appointed to the position of Lieutenant, Highland Park Police Department, August 15th, 2012. And it's signed by our Deputy Clerk, Erin Martin, and it says, "I, Erin Martin, Deputy Clerk Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey, do hereby certify the above to be true, a copy of the resolution adopted by the Borough Council, and this said day, the 14th of August, Speech.
Thank you, John. Ladies and gentlemen, I was remiss in not introducing the rest of my administrative team, Lieutenant Panacella and Captain Scott Golden, who I'm sure you both know. They were hiding in a corner. They're very camera shy, so don't look directly at them.[855.76][855.76](Laughter) Ted Haas will now promote to Sergeant, position Sergeant. We have Theodore Haas with us today.[866.04][866.04](Applause) Ted Haas was appointed as a Highland Park Police Officer on December 18th, 1990. He attended the Middlesex County Police Academy and graduated on May 17th, 1991. He earned a Bachelor's of Science degree in accounting from the University of Scranton. Officer Haas was assigned to the Patrol Division on May 20th, 1991. He has 32 letters of commendation in his file. He has been a three-time recipient of the St. Paul Knights of Columbus Annual Award for Police Officer of the Year, and on June 8th, 2011, he was honored for leading the department in drunk driving arrests by Mothers Against Drunk Driving Mad. He also received departmental citations for helping deliver a baby and for saving an individual from a fire. He's also a certified field training officer for the department, which means that we put our new officers with him and some of our other field training officers when they first come on the job. So holding the Bible for the swearing-in will be Ted's wife, Kathy.
I, Theodore Haas.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Sergeant
Of the office of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Personnel appointment, promotion to Theodore Haas to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department, Resolution 8-12226. Whereas the position of Sergeant became available due to retirement or slash promotion, and whereas Theodore Haas has applied for, applied for and is qualified to fill the position, therefore the Public Safety Board recommends that Theodore Haas be promoted to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Highland Park that Theodore Haas be appointed to the position of Sergeant in the Highland Park Police Department effective August 15th, 2012. This was done by Erin Martin, our Deputy Clerk Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey, to hereby certify the above to be a true copy of the resolution adopted by the Borough Council on the said day of the 14th of August, 2012.[1092.12][1092.12](Applause)
Forgot to introduce us to our beautiful children, Mariah and Vanessa, also at attendance this evening. Derek Wincowski, please step up. Derek Wincowski was appointed as a Highland Park Police Officer on August 9th, 1999. He attended the New Jersey State Police Academy in Seager and graduated on December 3rd, 1999. He was assigned to the Patrol Division until January 1st, 2004, when he was transferred to our Detective Bureau. On January 1st, 2009, he returned to the Patrol Division. Since that time, he has made arrests on some major cases. He has over 20 letters of commendation in his file and three departmental citations. He was recently honored last month by the New Jersey Police Honor Legion for his apprehension of an armed robbery suspect. Officer Wincowski is also the department's lead firearms instructor and armorer, co-supervisor of the department's emergency response team, failed training officer for newly hired officers, and he's a certified arson investigator. Holding the Bible for the swearing-in will be Derek's wife, Danielle. We also have Derek and Sarah, his two children, who will be participating in the ceremony.
I, Derek Wincowski, oh, I, and state your name, sorry.[1233.66][1233.66](Laughter) We don't rehearse this much. Do you want me to be Derek? I'm sorry. Let's start this again and do it the right way, okay? I, state your name.
I, Derek Wincowski.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Sergeant
Of the office of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Personal appointment, promotion of Derek Wincowski to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department, Resolution Number 8-12227. Whereas the position of Sergeant has been made available due to retirement slash promotion, and whereas Derek Wincowski has applied for the position, is qualified and filled the position, therefore the Public Safety Board recommends that Derek Wincowski be promoted to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by mayor and council of the Borough of Highland Park that Derek Wincowski be appointed to the position of Sergeant in the Highland Park Police Department effective August 15th, 2012. It was signed by our Borough Clerk, Erin Martin. Erin Martin, Deputy Clerk Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey, do hereby certify the above to be true, to be a true copy of the resolution adopted by Borough Council on the said day
Okay, next up we have Elon Langree. Wait a minute. Is he still on the schedule, Kathy, for promotion?[1429.41][1429.41](Laughter/Applause) Okay, Elon Langree was sworn in as a Highland Park Police Officer on February 15th, 2000. Previously, he had served as an investigator with the Middlesex County Sheriff's Department since August of 95. He was assigned to the Patrol Division until January 1st, 2008, when he was assigned to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office on a 10-month temporary basis. Upon his return to the police department on October 1st of '08, he was assigned to the Detective Bureau, and he was assigned as the officer in charge of that division in 2010, and has assumed that position since. He has 24 complimentary letters in his personnel file and two departmental citations. Along with his role as officer in charge of the Detective Bureau, he is also the department's UCR officer, right-to-know officer, TAC officer, and he's the administrator for our LiveScan fingerprint system, eTicket, InfoCop, New Jersey Learn, and ComputerAid dispatch system, and whatever else I could throw at him.[1502.16][1502.16](Laughter) He's also been assigned to serve as a member of the Public Safety Building Design Committee. As most of you know, we'll be getting a new police building, hopefully within the next year or so, and he is on that committee, and he oversaw the acquisition of our newly-acquired 800 radio system. So, holding the Bible for Elon will be his wife, Jennifer. Jennifer.
I, Elon Langree.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Sergeant
Of the office of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Personnel appointment, position of Elon Langree to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department, Resolution 8-12228. Whereas the position of Sergeant has become available due to retirement slash promotion, and whereas Elon Langree has applied for, has applied for and is qualified to fill the position, whereas the Public Safety Board recommends that Elon Langree be promoted to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department, now therefore be resolved by mayor and council of the Borough of Highland Park that Elon Langree be appointed to the position of Sergeant in Highland Park Police Department effective August 15th, 2012. I, Erin Martin, Deputy Clerk Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey, do certify the above to be true, a copy of the resolution is adopted by the Borough Council on the
Okay, last but not least, certainly, Richard Abrams. Rick, do you want to step up, please? Rick Abrams was appointed as a Highland Park Police Officer on June 6th, 2003. He attended the Monmouth County Police Academy and graduated on June 4th, 2003. Rick earned an Associate's degree in arts from Brookdale Community College. He is assigned to the Patrol Division. He has nine letters of commendation in his file. Officer Abrams is currently one of the department's firearms instructors and armorer. In addition to being a firearms instructor, he is also the co-supervisor of the department's emergency response team, a member of the Middlesex County Special Operations Response Team, and the TASER instructor for all of Middlesex County's officers. Holding the Bible for the swearing-in will be Rick's wife, Erica. And Lucas.
I, Richard Abrams.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
I state your name.
I, Richard Abrams.
Do soundly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
perform all the duties of the office of sergeant
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. Congratulations.
Personal appointment, promotion of Richard Abrams to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department, Resolution Number Eight Dash Twelve Two Twenty Nine. Whereas the position of sergeant has become available due to retirement slash promotion, and whereas Richard Abrams has been, has applied for and is qualified to fill the position, and whereas the Public Safety Board recommends that Richard Abrams be promoted to Sergeant, Highland Park Police Department, now therefore, it be resolved by Mayor and Council of the Borough of Highland Park that Richard Abrams be appointed to Sergeant in the Highland Park Police Department effective August fifteenth, two thousand twelve. Signed by Deputy Clerk, Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey, Erin Martin, to be certified, certify the above is true, and that the resolution adopted by the Borough Council on the said day of August fourteenth, two thousand twelve. You gotta turn him around. They gotta see their cute tie he's wearing. Turn over so you can see the tie.
Okay, that concludes the promotional ceremony, and the Mayor will make several remarks about it, but I would just like to thank all of my officers, the officers who took part in the promotional process, the officers who were promoted. I'm sure they're going to be a great asset to our management team, and more than that, we just have a great bunch of officers who are a pleasure to work with and they get the job done. Thank you, all of my officers. I also have to thank our Borough Administrator Kathy Kovac and our Mayor and Council. They made this happen. They saw that there was a need for these promotions. They provide us with equipment that is second to none in this county, or possibly even in the state, and I'm glad they saw the need to do that, and it will help us progress in the future. So, my thanks on behalf of the Police Department to all of you. Thank you, everyone.
Chief, I know we have a group of people outside. Are all the officers in the room? Can you just get all the officers in for a second? I just want to address all of them, if I can. Elsie, did you have anything you wanted to add, by the way, before I speak?
I just want to add that I want to thank all the officers that are here for their continued work to keep Highland Park a safe and enjoyable place to live. You guys have done a tremendous amount of work through the years, and from little children coming up to saying that, you know, they feel safe and they feel secure, and they can approach a police officer if they're having any kind of an issue or incident, that's something to be said when you're creating an environment where all, the least of your residents, I should say, feel safe and secure, and you make Highland Park a true home for all of us, and thank you for your hard work and dedication.
I'll just have a few quick remarks, if I could, while everybody's here, and I don't want to belabor this because I know that there's a little celebrating to do, and I don't want to interfere with that. First, Chief, you need to work on your jokes still, but we'll get there. The second thing, I'm glad that the Chief used the term "second to none." Today, somebody asked me how I like being Mayor. I'm not going to answer that question publicly. That's not important. But there are days when one can't help but notice what an extraordinarily, extraordinary honor and privilege it is to be able to be the leader of a governing body with the police force and all of our first responders, that in their own right, individually and collectively, second to none. So I'm extremely grateful to each and every one of you for all that you do, and to the governing body is incredibly grateful for all that you do. I think those of you that have known me for a while know that I'm fond of saying that I don't know what we can do for people that are willing to put themselves in harm's way 24/7 for us, but if this is some small gesture of gratitude and appreciation, then I'm glad that at least we're able to do this. The other thing I wanted to say is that, and I'm not quite sure how this happened. Chief, you know, we had about a hundred young people here from Brooklyn yesterday, which really was a direct result of what happened on National Night Out. Somebody in the community was so impressed by what they saw in this community on National Night Out, with all kudos to the PBO and to Lieutenant Penachella and the supporting cast of I don't know how many people that put together an absolutely remarkable event. They were so impressed and so moved, and they said that the camaraderie, the sense of intimacy and personal relationship was so positive, and gave them such a warm feeling that the community in which they live does not enjoy that type of relationship between the police and in particular, the young people in that community. So they asked if they could come here, get a little bit of a dose of what it's like in Highland Park in a positive way that they could potentially bring back to their own community. So, the fact that we enjoy something, I think, as a governing body with all of the officers here, and that we enjoy as a community, I think really, the ultimate benefit, which is that I like to believe that I can go anywhere, at any time, in this community and feel safe because of what you do, I think is the ultimate tribute to what it is that you have done, what you do, and what I'm sure you'll continue to do. So I can congratulate and thank each and every one of you for the extraordinary job that you do on our behalf, day in and day out, and I look forward to continuing to serve with you in the future. Now, before we retire temporarily for some refreshments, we have a little business to do, right, which is I believe we need to pass a resolution, right, to, I guess, formalize what we just did? Is that correct? Okay. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the following. The resolution to promote Sergeant Thomas Hamel to lieutenant. Resolution to promote Police Officer Theodore Haas to sergeant. Resolution to promote Police Officer Derek Wenzkowski to sergeant. Resolution to promote Police Officer Elon Langkry to sergeant. Resolution to promote Police Officer Richard Abrams to sergeant. Can I have a roll call? Oh, sorry, I need a motion.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And now it's official. Congratulations. Oh, I'm sorry. The deputy clerk pointed out that we need to do a motion for the resolution for hiring Police Officer Kevin Schiffner. Kevin, I'm sorry. Do that right now. I got caught up in my own exuberance. We could do that Goodfellas thing, but it wouldn't be appropriate right now. What do you mean by, you know this, okay. All right, so can I have a resolution to hire, a motion on the resolution to hire Police Officer Schiffner Jr.?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Now it's nearly official. Congratulations. And here has to be what is the favor for some of you for this evening. Now it's time for a brief recess. We'll adjourn to the lobby where we have some refreshments. Well, that was very nice. Okay, so, we didn't adjourn, we just took a recess, so I don't have to call the meeting back to order, correct, per return?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'd like to request a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held January seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, February seventh, two thousand and twelve, February twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, March sixth, two thousand and twelve, March twentieth, two thousand and twelve, April third, two thousand and twelve, April seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, May first, two thousand and twelve, and the special meeting held April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, as distributed. Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Can we just have that by affirmation, acclamation, something like that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Accuse.
Okay. Well, I'd like to welcome back our new old, former, current Main Street Executive Director, James McCrone. So, Jamie, welcome back from the other side of the pond, and I guess this is your first Main Street minute since you're back. So, would you enter and sign in, please? Right over there is fine.
The once and future director, right? So, yes, the rumors are true, I'm back, and I couldn't be happier. I'm here to get started, and I've been meeting with Main Street's executive committee and its other standing committees, gradually getting up to speed, I'm making the rounds, meeting with merchants and the business owners, learning what needs to get done. I'm pleased that what I see is happening here in Highland Park. The Streetscape Project is going to be a wonderful gift for a long time to this downtown. I think you should all feel very good about the way it's coming together. I'm encouraged that new businesses are opening here, and I will work hard to bring in even more. There are a number of things coming up. We've just finished the final summer nights in the park. It was a big rainout, unfortunately, this last one, but there was still activity. I stopped by Rutgers Barber Shop, he had all of his chairs, he was doing a cut-a-thon, and all four of his chairs were full. So, Night Out was an enormous success, and my congratulations to everyone who organized it and participated. Well, it was great. Townwide Garage Sale is September eighth and ninth, and Main Street is working on our latest version of the successful welcome packets for new residents. Our next big activity is Arts in the Park, which is September thirtieth, and we're looking forward to a great year. Finally, I'm particularly glad to be back in a place where everyone works so well together. As of this morning, at about eight forty-five, the notion of sustainable communities in Highland Park happily apparently now extends to bee colonies. Don Rich and DPW coordinated cutting down a tree in front of one oh-eight North Eighth Avenue with the preservation of a colony of bees. Don, or Frank Troy, I'm not sure who, contacted the Raritan Valley Beekeepers Association to help and contain and relocate the bees, who are now thriving somewhere in Somerset County, I believe. I think their actions were in the best traditions of Highland Park, and the way we do work together and across all of our different disciplines, I'm not sure if that's quite the word for it. I don't have a lot to report today. I'm still kind of learning myself, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to try to.
Anybody have any questions? Oh, John, you do. Yes, please.
With the people moving into Pulte's Homes Development on River Road, is there any attempt to communicate with them about the attractiveness of downtown?
Absolutely. We had conversations with the first, in the first wave of new move-ins, we're getting them these welcome packets. They are, it's an orientation packet, it sort of talks about, it gives sort of information about, you know, garbage collection, things like that, where the websites, you know, what the relevant websites are, things like that, and it includes coupons, business cards, things like that, that we hope will drive people, or draw people into our downtown. Right when people move in, you know, they're establishing new habits, new routines, and this is sort of the perfect time to sort of jump, jump in and give them new habits, new routines, that we hope will actually be in our downtown. So, I haven't had any conversations yet, since I've been back, but we had, we did establish with Pulte before that these welcome packets go in as people are moving in, and that's definitely something I'll be continuing forward with.
Other questions for Jamie? Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to a productive year with you.
I do too. Thank you.
Okay. Council reports. Councilmember Foster Dublin?
I have no big report, because my big report was all the swearing in of all the officers that we just had, so that was my, my big to-do, that's what we've been working on. We have other things that we're working on in public safety, but we'll reveal them later. One of the things that we're doing this year, instead of doing a nine-eleven memorial, we'll be working on a project called Pinwheel for Peace. And Pinwheel for Peace is our wish of what we would like to see world peace as. So we'll be having pinwheel kits that will, that will be over at our senior center, and we'll announce when you can pick them up, and people can write what their hopes and desires and wish for peace would look like. So the idea is to have one day in the world where there's no more wars, no more fighting, no more gang violence, no more any kind of violence, that one day there could be a peace, we'll have a better and peaceful world. And we're working with all of public safety and community service to making this project happen. More information to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potts?
I just wanted to mention, under the rec department, excuse me, for youth soccer K through sixth grade, the registration deadline is going to be September seventh, and the games are played on Sunday, and the weekly training clinics are held with Rover's Soccer and Spencer Rockman as well. Also, under the rec department, we have some adult fall programming. All of these classes will be beginning in the third week in September, and those classes will be involved with volleyball, soccer on the turf, basketball, Israeli dance, and step class. And under team programs, all of these classes are going to also begin on the third week in September. There'll be art classes, theater, table tennis, Monday Night Football, as well as a track club. As far as the seniors' activities, on Wednesday, August eighth, over seventy residents participated in the Life Line Stroke Prevention Screening, and that was held at the Senior Youth Center. Upcoming events for seniors, on Monday, August twentieth, there'll be a summer ice cream social, there'll be a senior luncheon on Monday, September tenth, and there's also going to be some upcoming trips, Historic Smithville, Long Branch Beach, and Atlantic City Showboat Casino trips as well. Just as a reminder, monthly calendars and program flyers for events, activities, and programs, and trips can be picked up at the Senior Youth Center, or accessed through our Highland Park Borough website at www.hpborough.com. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. On, early on the morning of Friday, August third, at about two nineteen a.m., the alarm was sounded at the housing building behind us. They had a sprinkler fail, and the building flooded. Nearly a hundred people were evacuated into the Senior Youth Center across the street, I mean, across, across the lot, and remarkably, there was a, an air of calm, and everybody came together and handled this, this crisis in a truly amazing way. I just want to thank emergency services, police, fire, the housing authority themselves, these are the new management that we have from Woodbridge, the amazing women at the Senior Rec Center, Kim, Andrea, and Janet. Kathy, thank you very much. And Gail, and Gary, and the Mayor, who all showed up at four thirty in the morning. And... morning, um, and, um, and thank you to everybody. Um, everybody was safely, um, back, except for one, one woman, um, his apartment was damaged, but they, um, they housed her in, in a, on a spare apartment. Everybody was moved back later that evening, and, um, it, it worked out. So, um, thanks to everybody. Um, just a couple of brief notes. Um, in, in some of the things we're going to pass tonight, I hope that we can pass, um, the library roof needs repair, it had some flooding last week, and, um, um, we are going to use some grant money that they were given for the HVAC system, that they're repairing, which they're repaying right now, and, um, we wanna pass a resolution to use those funds to pay for the roof repairs, about six thousand dollars worth, which we think will, will, um, repair the roof for a good six years or so. Um, and also, we'd like to pass tonight an inter-local agreement with the housing, um, authority to share certain services, which we haven't been able to do before, but we're very excited that now we can share some, some of the services and, and, and save some, save some money, basically. And, um, uh, um, well, I guess, the, oh, there's some new mosquito spray information on the Board of Health website, you can access that through the Borough website, just click on Board of Health, and, um, click on some of the, the highlighted words there for information on mosquito spray. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Malay? No report tonight? Councilman Erickson?
Uh, two brief items. One is that periodically municipal audits are audited by themselves. Our audit was audited this year and was found to be in excellent condition. Um, and again, secondly, uh, this year's audit begins, uh, at the end of, or this week or beginning of next week.
Thank you. Council President Will Nittler?
Um, I'd like to let everyone know that we are taking our communications seriously here. You, uh, those of you who have signed up, um, for receiving our e-newsletters have been seeing, um, these great new vehicles come, uh, into their emails every two weeks. Um, they're full of information about upcoming events, uh, changes in schedules, either here at the Borough or through garbage, uh, about garbage pickup and, uh, bulk trash, and, um, little, uh, bits of information about other events happening throughout the Borough. Um, so, um, that, that's a new vehicle for us, and we're very pleased with the way it's been going so far. Um, we're also working on, um, a hard copy, um, newspaper that will be, uh, ready for distribution in the late fall or early winter of this year, so keep, uh, keep your eyes open for that coming. And also, Gary Leslie and his cable TV, uh, group are going to be looking at ways to expand their programming and other opportunities that will exist for us here. Um, so thank you, Gary, in advance of your presentation to council later on. Um, also, uh, from the, from an economic development perspective, I have been meeting with each of the chairs of the individual parts of our Economic Development Committee, and that includes zoning, planning, the redevelopment agency, and Main Street, welcome back, Jamie. Um, and I'm hoping that we can open up more communications between each of these different parts of our, uh, Economic Development, um, subcommittees, uh, and committee overall going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I have three brief items. One, I'd like to read you a letter, uh, that I received recently. Dear Mayor Menkov, as, at a showcase on July fifteenth at the IM Gallery on Raritan Avenue before a sell-out audience, students of five ballroom dance instructors demonstrated their artistic and athletic talent. Performers ranged in age from six to eighty. At a time when the public is focused on improving the health status of all its citizens, especially seniors, more attention needs to be paid to the benefits of ballroom dance. That's why the audience of the showcase so enthusiastically greeted the senior formation dance team of the Raritan Valley Y. Their efforts have not gone unnoticed by Governor Chris Christie, who wrote to the team on the eve of the showcase. Programs like these that provide our state's senior citizens with an outlet for developing and sharing their creative talents contribute to their quality of life. IM Gallery has become a center of dance instruction in central Jersey and has attracted a number of top instructors, including Irina Pinihina, a rising star national champion, southeastern American champion, and a finalist in many American international competitions. In addition to her work at the IM Gallery, Ms. Pinihina is a coach of the Rutgers Competitive Ballroom Dance Team, which has appeared on the televi- on television's popular Dancing with the Stars. As Highland Park continues to develop and encourage its artistic community, the presence of IM Gallery and the work of the dance instructors and performers based there should be acknowledged, supported, and encouraged by Highland Park's elected officials. Consider it so recognized. Okay. Uh, and I'm especially pleased to hear that this is something which we have a, uh, private entity, and we have, you know, people from all ages throughout the community participating, and I know that's not the only example of that, but I look forward to sharing more such stories in the future. Okay. Item two, uh, I just wanted to make sure to underscore this comment that Councilwoman Wolkowitz made about the library roof repairs. I just wanna thank Freeholder Polos for, and all the county freeholders for, um, helping us expedite our ability to, uh, be able to resolve, to vote on those repairs and move that forward for the benefit of the library. He was instrumental in us receiving the original hundred thousand dollar grant. Uh, he continues to be a wonderful friend and advocate for the Borough, and we're grateful, grateful for all of his efforts. Uh, the third thing I just wanna mention, or reiterate, I should say, um, since apparently some of us weren't paying attention during my remarks about National Night Out before, is that, uh, we had an extraordinary event here last Tuesday. National Night Out, uh, it certainly was record attendance, right? This is the fifth year, and each year we've seen this build. Uh, it's a true community partnership. Uh, it's not just that the public comes out in increasing numbers each year, uh, which I think is outs- is, is exceptionally important for, uh, good police-community relations. I think the other thing about it that's meaningful is that with each passing year, um, whenever the merchants are called on to be supportive for an event like this, they're incredibly so, and we're incredibly great, uh, grateful for their generosity. Um, and as a not unimportant, or I should say, as an important not footnote, but front note, uh, we were also able to raise an additional five hundred dollars for the food pantry. We even, we even had a few people that were kind enough, like the police chief, to allow himself to be dunked several times. So, you know, all in all, it was a big success. I mentioned, uh, in particular Lieutenant Panacella, but this was really a team effort. I mean, it was all hands on deck for the staff from morning until well into the evening, and it really was, uh, extraordinary, and it, it really is just a great evening in Highland Park. And it, it's special, and, uh, kudos, chief, to you and to your entire police force, to you, Borough Administrator Kovak, to the entire governing body, this was very much a team and a community effort. So, I just wanted to mention that as well. Uh, with that, Borough Administrator Kovak, do you have a report for this evening?
No report.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I look in the audience and I see some familiar and friendly faces, so I thought maybe we should report on the status of our Mount Laurel litigation. Uh, as, as you may know, uh, on one of the litigations, River Road, uh, on May tenth, we entered into what's called an interim settlement agreement, and at that time, we indicated a willingness to rezone the property to support ninety-four units of housing. Uh, during the summer months, we've been working on what's called the final settlement agreement. We've also received from the developer a concept plan, which shows the layout of these proposed ninety-four units. I understand the mayor's made that available to some of the residents who are most concerned about how that concept plan lays out. And finally, we've been working on the technical ordinance, which would create a new zone, which would wrap around this new development. So, those efforts continue. I will brief the council tonight, uh, on the status of those three documents, as we try to come to closure quickly on the final settlement agreement. And then, if that is reached, there will be what's called a fairness hearing before the court, and that would be scheduled at some date in the future. For our purposes, however, when the final settlement agreement is completed, the ordinance is ready to be rolled out, and that would be done as a part of the public agenda here, as a part of a Borough Council meeting, and everybody would be invited to review that and comment on those final documents. The other litigation we have is the American Properties litigation, and that is the one we're continuing and have during the summer months continued to meet and negotiate, try to settle, settle that case as well. The most recent activity we had, the council met with the, uh, master Elizabeth McKenzie, I believe it was on the seventh of this month, and we spent several hours, uh, discussing the concerns and the direction of the settlement, and trying to get her to understand the, the uniqueness of that site and the uniqueness of the Borough. And I think we came away from that meeting, uh, very much encouraged. So, we're re-engaging with American, and we're attempting to, uh, settle that litigation as well, uh, but we don't have anything immediately scheduled with them. And as far as the court proceedings go, there's nothing currently scheduled before court, but when I do have any dates to share with you, I'd certainly let you know. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to open the floor now for, uh, public discussion, and, um, because we're starting a little bit later than usual, tonight, we're gonna have two fifteen-minute sessions. If we need to go a little bit over that, we will. Um, I don't wanna curtail discussion. On the other hand, um, we tend to be pretty expansive, and generally, I have no problem with that, but just given the fact that this is our only meeting in August, we have other business that we need to do that could take some time, I wanna make sure that we strike a balance and that people who want to be heard are able to be heard. So, I would just ask you to please be respectful of that consideration while we try to be respectful of whatever it is that you have to say. So, with that, let me open the floor for public discussion. Mr. Seminero, would you come up, please, and state your name and address?
Dominic Seminero, two forty-four Harrison Avenue, and I'm not here for the sidewalks. I have two issues with it, I'll try to deal with them very quickly. A lot of, yes, well, I, I've encountered a lot of people, mostly seniors, to be perfectly candid, who are having a lot of difficulty in cutting up boxes. The Public Works has become, um, great guys, and so, some of the smaller boxes now, they're not requiring them to be cut up, and they're taking them. But I was just wondering if there was a way where the Borough could provide an open truck that would follow the other truck, or come on a separate day, and you would perhaps register with the Borough as a, as a senior, pick, you pick the age, or a disabled individual, who would be able to put their large boxes out without having to cut them up. So, I'd just throw that out, if you wanted, it's something to discuss in the future, but there are, it is affecting a lot of people, and, so I would ask that you consider it. The second thing I'd like to just bring up is this. About two years ago, the mayor and the council decided that to knock down the old senior center would make the lot much more attractive and easily disposable of. It's a lot that's been appraised for two hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot that sits in the center of our town. It's a lot that can produce fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year in taxes. My question is, it's been two, almost two years that that senior center has been knocked down. I know that individuals have approached the Borough about buying the lot. It seems that the response is, is that, well, we haven't even had it appraised yet. It's two years since it's been knocked down. It's two hundred thousand dollars in revenue to the Borough. It's twenty thousand dollars a year in tax money. I'd just like to know why, over two years, it still sits there, and there isn't a strong initiative to dispose of it rapidly.
I, I can speak to your first, uh, uh, question about the boxes first, and I believe, and I just, we're just reshuffling our, uh, committee assignments, but John informs me that there are no more restrictions on the size of cardboard.
Oh, that's great, okay.
So, um, you know, I'll, I'll confirm this with Don and make sure, you know, and, but, you know, if John says it's true, it's about the truth.
That's great. I'm thinking a lot of people have, because there's, the missing seven.
Refrigerator boxes are a little big.
The what, I'm sorry?
Refrigerator boxes are a little big.
Yes, I understand.
You know, but, uh, I'll confirm that.
Oh, great, that's great.
And, and just since, uh, part of the, you know, I've been, I was on redevelopment before, um, one of the things that the Borough, and this is about the, uh, the senior center property, um, one of the things that, uh, the Borough wanted was not simply to sell the property outright, but since it's in redevelopment, to entertain any developer whatsoever that wanted to come in and as part of their development, purchase that property and build something. We have entertained, you know, a few different developers, none of which then followed through. It's not as if the, the Borough doesn't want to move on the property. I mean, we had a large, oh, I forget what the name of the developer had actually put in bids along numerous houses, and then the economy fell down, and so, it, it's the one thing the Borough just simply doesn't want to do, and especially at this point in time, is simply just sell the property and then have it maybe be developed or maybe just sit there. It is within redevelopment, so one of the issues that we were trying to do was, let's say, to use the, let's say, purchase price of the property as a bargaining chip, let's say, to get a better quality development by, you know, you know, letting the, maybe adjusting the value of the, you know, assessment, you know? So, we have in, we're open to all bidders, anybody that wants to come in and redevelop that process, we're open for business.
But part of the problem is, is that the people that inquire have no idea what you want to purchase the lot. I know that they've inquired, and I know that they've.
And responded. The, I, the, and I think about, you know, four or five years ago, it was worth close to eight hundred thousand dollars, and now, like you said, it's, you know, close to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but each time, you know, as things change.
I understand that too, but let, let me just ask you this.
If I could, if I could, Doc, Council.
Of course.
Um, uh, as, as Councilman Malay mentioned, we've just all reshuffled positions, and, um, uh, I know he's happy that, uh, I, he no longer has economic development.
Nonsense.
I do. Um, and, um, I do know that the redevelopment agency and several people through, uh, who are working on, on, uh, the downtown area and development would be interested in, in hearing what anyone has to propose in terms of that piece of property. So, as far as the value of it, again, I, I would ask your patience a little bit, because we just reshuffled these positions, and I'll be happy to have a conversation with the redevelopment agency and have somebody get back to you if you have somebody that is interested.
And the only other thing I would ask is that you, you, um, create a list of type of things that you would like to see.
That exists.
Well.
It's in the redevelopment plan.
Well, it does, but I know there's suggestions from the individuals on the redevelopment committee.
Oh, okay.
When people have come before it.
Okay.
As to certain type of, of things.
Okay.
If those are the type of things, and I'm not being critical of those things, I'm just saying, if those are the type of things that you would find favorable, then it's much easier for people like myself to go out and find somebody who may be interested in doing that type of thing.
Okay.
And we get this money into the Borough, we reduce our taxes.
Right.
And we're all happy.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Thank you, Dominic. Okay. Yes, Mr. Freeze?
I'd like to speak to an item.
I'm sorry, Mr. Freeze, can you just again, I'm, I apologize.
I'm with Freeze, two oh one South Second Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak about an item in the consent agenda number seventeen, and the bills list. There's some of those bills that I think we're planning to approve reimbursement for the garbage. Someone say so?
It's not to you.
Yes, go ahead, please.
May I just apply to approve the reimbursement for the garbage rebate tonight? It's on the bills list, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll speak, speak to it then. The figures compiled to determine these reimbursements have many hazards and emissions. The most egregious is the admission of the cost of collection vehicles. There is absolutely no way you can collect garbage without them. The figures due to the cost of fuel, where does the fuel go, excepting to these collection trucks? If you were using trucks, the cost of these vehicles must be included in the calculations. Either figure there is any depreciation, or there is a cost of amortization. You must revise the reimbursement figures to correct this error before approving any reimbursement.
Thank you. Isn't anybody that would have liked to speak today? Borough Administrator Kovak, could I impose on you?
I've spoken to Mr. Freeze about this. All the documentation that I showed him is said capital.
Please speak into the microphone.
All expenditure, capital expenditures are not included in the calculation. That's the documentation that I showed you, Mr. Freeze.
And that's an acceptable formula, well.
Okay, I, I understand you different, we know that we disagree.
A question for the Borough Administrator, has our process been examined by a, a third party?
Um, the problem we have. The problem we have is, we've contacted, we've contacted the state, we've asked around. Every town does it differently. There's no guidelines the state has to tell us exactly how to calculate it. We've asked for it. No one seems to have anything. This is the way it's been done, as far as I can go back, and the documentation that I have from, I believe it was Steve Gabel, who read the, when the law came out, he gave us information. I wasn't here, I wasn't working at the borough at the time when this happened, and one of the documents stated that capital expenditures are not included in the calculation.
Okay.
I gave you topic before, but I'll give it to you again. Absolutely.
Okay, yes, please. Would you state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Dolly Rogers. I live at 504 Magnolia Street. I'm a tenant there. I wasn't here when the beginning of the meeting started. I don't know what you talked about as far as the agenda for the evening, but I will express to you that I am very disturbed about the sidewalk debacle. I don't know why the township has gotten involved with threatening people who live in the town and telling them that they need to fix their sidewalks, because that is part and parcel of your eligible rights as a resident in town to have homeowner's insurance. If someone falls on your property, it comes under your homeowner's insurance. So, I don't understand why the town has been involved in sending threatening letters out to the residents of town, telling them to fix their sidewalks. This is like beyond anything that I've ever heard in my life. I am very disturbed about that. The other thing that...
Excuse me, if I may, we'll take these one at a time. Did you have something else you wanted to say about sidewalks, or you have a separate topic?
No, I have a separate topic.
Okay, could we deal with your sidewalk issue first?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Well, the only thing I'll say is that I respectfully differ. I don't think it's a debacle, but from a legal perspective, I think I'm going to defer to the Borough Attorney in terms of this motion of rights and responsibilities, et cetera. So, while reasonable people may differ, and I respect your opinion, I do want to hear what the Borough Attorney has to say in terms of how we've approached this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've looked at the issue, and it really doesn't turn on the personal liability of the owner. What we want to do is ensure that the sidewalks are safe, so that people can walk on them. We're not concerned about, because it's a private matter, any liability that a private owner may have for somebody falling on their sidewalk. We want to prevent the fall, and that's the purpose of the ordinance, which has been enacted by most municipalities in this state and has been upheld in court. And it's the intent to make sure that a walkable community like this is safe. So, that's the purpose of the program.
Okay, can I ask you this, sir?
Sure.
Is this not part and parcel of Agenda 21, the U.N. Agenda 21 that Mayor Frank put in place before she left here?
Yes.
Because if a person falls on their private property, is it not your responsibility as an owner of a home to pay for that liability? What deems the town to be aggressive in pushing the homeowner to fix their sidewalk? I want to know what that's all about.
So, that other homeowners don't fall. I mean, that's the purpose of the program. It doesn't revolve around protecting or not protecting homeowners in residential or non-residential areas from liability.
I wasn't stating protecting the homeowner.
Well, that's what you're talking about, liability.
No, I was saying to you, sir, that the onus is on the property owner if someone falls on their property. That is why you have homeowner's insurance. What gives this town the liability to send out letters to threaten the homeowners to fix their sidewalks? And I want to know if this is under Agenda 21?
Well, I don't know anything about Agenda 21.
Then I think you should read that, sir.
Well, I'll be happy to if you give it to me. Yeah, I mean, the authority for what we're doing is founded in Title 40 of the New Jersey statutes, and we picked that up and introduced that into our local code.
Well, there's also...
Long before Agenda 21.
There is also a state law that says anything from your property to the sidewalk is part and parcel of the township's ownership.
You're responsible, under our code, to take care of your sidewalks.
Is that a township law?
It's a township law, and it's a state law.
Does that supersede the state law?
It's a state law that we do at the township, at the parole level.
Does it supersede the state law, sir?
It follows the state law.
So, can you tell me, does it supersede the state law?
It does not supersede the state law.
Thank you, sir.
One of the things that's a hallmark of these council meetings, at least while I've been mayor, and I'd like to think beforehand, is if people come and you're upset, I appreciate the fact that you may be upset about whatever issues troubling you. What I really would strongly appreciate, and I want to say I won't tolerate, because I can't order people around, but I would be greatly appreciative if we just dialed down the rhetoric a little and we maintained a tone of respect towards the people on this dais.
I know, we need to...
Okay, I thought, if you think that we're being aggressive in terms of the way we're enforcing things, we want to be respectful, we want to hear what you have to say. It's easier to hear when somebody is addressing us in respectful tone. Please feel free, but you need to come back up to the microphone. I can only tell you how I heard what you said. I can't speak for what anybody else said, and I just wanted to point that out. You're welcome to voice your opinion, and I appreciate hearing what you have to say.
Are you the mayor?
I am.
Mayor Minkoff?
Yes.
I was not being disrespectful. I am just speaking for the people of my neighborhood who are so upset at the fact that they received letters from the township stating that they had a certain amount of time to fix their sidewalks. We totally feel that this is a communism move, and we do not appreciate it. And that is all I would like to say, sir. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Other comments? Yes, please.
Henning Christensen, my wife and I own two rental properties in Highland Park. And let me just follow up on the comment that council member came with, that her wishes of peace and stop wars and so on. There was a time where, I believe, we had very much peace and not too much hostility and so on, but we've got to go back two or three billion years. So, unfortunately, we are in such a situation that we can't do much about yesterday. We can't do anything about the day before yesterday. We can't change it, we can't correct anything, but we have all the opportunities in the world to do something about tomorrow and the day after tomorrow, and be good to each other hereafter. Anyway, I'm a little disturbed about the hostile approach that the township have, or some members of the township, has displayed toward us, resident, I mean, homeowners or residents as well. When we were approached before, I guess the letter came out by the, I mean, the Housing Authority, they told us in a very, in a very forceful way what we had to do with the sidewalk. And now, I hear from the council member that the sidewalk has to be safe, and I agree with that. Where is that line, safe? We were told we couldn't repair, we couldn't correct anything. It has to be replaced, period. And we couldn't even argue. That is not the way to be nice to each other and to work for the future. Number one, there's nothing against, in my mind, to be a little innovative. We have seasons here in New Jersey. We have hot seasons, cold seasons, and especially the snowy season. And a lot of older residents, they have a hard time to keep up with cleaning sidewalks from snow and ice because of their health and other conditions. And there's a time limit where, from the snow stops to fall, so you've got to clean your sidewalk. So, being a little innovative, that's how the whole mechanism works. We wouldn't have airplanes and cars and all those fancy things if someone didn't use their brain to do new things. So, while we are forcing some people to re-cement their sidewalks, which is something that I don't understand, it could also be with pavers. I can't say why we shouldn't have pavers. I came from Denmark, and in Denmark, all the sidewalks are packed sand, and they are perfect. So, here, it's all cement or nothing. That I don't care for too much. Anyway, so while we are at it, why not help the homeowners and think about tomorrow and the next winter and the next winter, and put some tubing down underneath the concrete, so we can, from each house or wherever the station is, pump some hot liquid through the night, or the day before, hours before that the snow starts to fall, so it melts by itself. And then, next morning, we have a nice, clean sidewalk to walk on. That's progress. Some people call it stupid, say not to do it. I call it progress. We can do that tomorrow for ourselves and so on. So, the hostile attitude toward the homeowners, we have the property, not for fun of it or to feed a whole bunch of people who many of them don't appreciate their employment. Let's face it, all the public employees, they're working for the public. Some of them don't understand that, and they don't appreciate it. But, but let's be kind to each other, and we can be in a lot more civilized manner when we are being approached, or we ask for direction or rules and so on. So, here, in reference to the sidewalk situation, I would very much like to, if you would provide me with all the facts, meaning how it originated, names, timing, the whole thing, so we know where it started up, because it's very awkward the way it's approached. It makes no sense whatsoever, and it's too expensive. We cannot, it's similar to a wheelbarrow. If it can handle that shovel full, it can handle that one. It can handle that one, and all of a sudden, it's so heavy that it crosses. And we are, as taxpayers, to the point where it won't take another shovel before it crosses. So, we've got to go easy with requests and requirements. Let's be a little smart. And if I may add to it, I have read in the paper that some developer is going to put up a lot of apartments over close to the railroad. Well, what Highland Park needs more than anything else, is a bypass highway. So, if you make another bridge across the river and make a bypass highway along the railroad and so on, all the merchants in Highland Park would love it, because many, many people are afraid to come and shop in Highland Park because of all the truck traffic and generally the heavy traffic. So, be a little innovative and work for the future. That's where we can, we can do that. We don't have to be puppets and sit there and still move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Before, well, what I was going to say is, what I'd like to do is, I couldn't tell if your hand was up. Okay, so please, come up.